Good evening, everyone joining us virtually. Thank you all so much for being here. I am Letitia Johnson, the Councilwoman for District 4. Happy to have you all here, happy to be here this evening. As many of you may be aware, City Council is on recess. That means not that we're on vacation for five and a half weeks. It means that we are, we have more time to be out in community and connecting with our community organizations. And so it was important for me to make sure that I was here this evening and not just have the team to oversee and facilitate. But I assure you, after tomorrow, I'm taking some time to rest. So that after the day after Labor Day, when we make it back into session, I'm happy and I am there committed to continuing the good fight for District 4, our communities and all of our residents, okay? You all good with that? All right, very good. So anybody who has my personal cellphone number, if you text me about business, you will hear back from me the day after Labor Day. Okay, all right. So we have, the meeting tonight is really focused on blight violations. Can you all please keep it down in the back? Cynthia, Cynthia, can you all please make sure you keep your voices low as the meeting has started? Thank you. So tonight, I wanted to have a conversation about blight violations. I've received a number of notifications from residents, from community leaders who have indicated that a number of seniors have gotten blight violations in a particular area. And then I started getting other messages saying, you know, okay, what's happening? What's going on in the city? Why are seniors getting these tickets? And I'm not sure that inspectors know whether a senior lives there or who lives in the home. But I wanted to make sure that we had a conversation about blight violations. We have Mr. Deron Jones, who is going to talk about blight violations from one perspective. But I just learned that B.C. has other divisions that focus on different types of blight violations. So we'll ask for him to share information about the area that he manages. And then we have Attorney Pastula, who's over the Department of Appeals and Hearings. Because the person, the first person that brought this issue up to me said, as a nonprofit leader, perhaps we can provide some resources to seniors and low-income households who receive these blight tickets, but they really don't have the resources to address the ticket. And so a representative is here from that organization. If they would like to share with you all who they are, I welcome that. They may pull you aside to the, at the end of the meeting or what have you, to understand how they might be able to support you if you have received a blight violation. One of the other things I hope we'll be able to do is just share experiences that you've had if you've received a blight violation. I've had people talk to me about the timeliness of when they receive the warning and when they actually receive the ticket. Timeliness from the date the ticket is due and when your court date is and having to pay the violation within a certain amount of time or you're going to get an additional fee added. So I want to have some of those conversations and see if there's anything that is unfavorable for our residents policy-wise that we can address. And so with that, before I get started, I want to acknowledge Ms. Teresa Dubos, who is the District 4 Board of Review member. Ms. Dubos, she works with all of our residents, thank you, she works with all of our residents in the district and beyond to provide support and assistance with the HOPE applications and going through the Board of Review process, which if anyone wants to appeal their property taxes, their property assessment, they can do that through the Board of Review. But Ms. Dubos has done a phenomenal job since she's been on the Board of Review and has an amazing heart. So she'll help you with almost anything. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to tell anybody that. And so, and so with that, we are going to go ahead and get started. And I'm going to introduce a manager from the Building Safety and Engineering and Environmental Department, Mr. Deron Jones. And let me also say as a reminder, this is a hybrid meeting, so we do have individuals joining us on Zoom. If you have a question, I would like to ask for you all to wait until Mr. Jones has concluded his presentation. We have a microphone that we will utilize just to make sure everyone on Zoom can hear the question and the answer. Thank you all so much in advance.
All right. Good evening. I am, as she said, Mr. Jones, Deron Jones is my title, my whole name. I am the manager of Building Safety, one of the managers, I should say, of the Building Safety Department. I work with the Environmental Enforcement. So my area is, the area deals with, my team deals with blight violations as they relate to overgrowth on a property, illegal dumping, early balk set out, and rodents. Pretty much that's our focus. We used to deal with the inoperable vehicles, but we are no longer responsible for enforcing for environment, for inoperable vehicles. So, and I'm not sure if, well, let me start by saying this. I heard a young lady say that seniors sometime get tickets from, I guess, us and other B.C. teams, but we, she was absolutely correct. We have no knowledge as to if there's a senior in the house when we get there or who owns the property. Because we basically write our tickets based on the name that is on the deed. So that, you know, they don't have a place on there that says, ah, this owner is a senior. So I apologize if, you know, you've got caught up in a ticket like that. However, the good thing is that if you get a notice from us or you get a ticket from us, you can always call our department and we can, in most cases, figure things out, give you additional time if you need additional time to correct a violation. The main thing is to contact us before your court date. Very, very important, okay? Because then after the court date, not a lot we can do with it to extent. We can help, but it's best to contact us before the court date, okay? So I'm going to talk about what a citizen, be it senior or young person or whoever, if you're a property owner, I'm sorry, property owner, anybody that's living in a residential property in the city of Detroit. So to keep our inspectors away, the main thing is, and I'm gonna go by this, how to be a good neighbor, there's a bunch of these on the back table, and if you need more, I have more to give you. So this is a flyer that we came up with to try to help educate citizens about what their part is to keep the inspectors from coming to your property and issuing any tickets. So I'm gonna just kind of go down the list. I don't know if anybody have them. You can read along with me. If you have any questions, I will take them at the end for sure. So the main thing that we find ourselves dealing with a lot is balk set out, early balk set out, which I don't know if everybody's aware that the city now does balk every week as opposed to every two weeks, which has really helped a lot. Because now if your balk is out early, you can, you can pretty much assume it's gonna be picked up before that week is out as opposed to every other week like it used to be. So when you're placing your balk at the curb, you want to make sure that that, that balk should be at the curb. Actually, the ordinance requires it to be out 24 hours before the balk pickup. So you, you don't want to put it out before 6:00 p.m., the day before the balk pickup. Because you would be subject to a, you would be in violation if it's out more than that, The other thing that I want to talk about as far as balk is making sure that you place that balk on your own property. For some reason, and I understand the reason, I believe, people like to put the balk on the vacant lot because they, you know, maybe they just cut their grass, they don't want their property to look bad, they don't want all this trash sitting in front of their house. But that is a violation if you take that trash and you take that trash and you take it down the street and you put it on that vacant lot. Now you are illegal dumping. Okay, so keep that in mind. And then I, and I understand, I hear people say it all the time, this is where we always put our stuff. And the problem with that is that that stuff will sit there until an environmental inspector comes over and makes some special arrangements to get it moved. Now you, just think, let's, let's just use this number. Say we've got 10 houses on a block. Everybody has two yards of debris, which you're allowed to have to put out for balk. That truck is gonna come down there, it's gonna pick up everything on that street that's under two yards and fits into the compliance of what they pick up. However, if those same 10 people, I believe that's the number I used, take that balk and put it on a lot, all of a sudden, you have 20 yards of debris on a vacant lot. That truck is pretty much gonna pass that by. And then you, you end up sitting there watching it way longer than you would have did if everybody put it individually in front of your own house. So that's one of the things we really want to get citizens to do so that we can try to have a clean city between balk pickups, you know what I'm saying? So if you put that balk out three days before balk day, it's gonna sit there until that balk truck comes, and the truck will take it away if it's in compliance. However, if you put that balk on that vacant lot, it's gonna sit there probably two weeks or longer, depending on how long it would take for somebody to report it and for the city to come out, city meaning the environmental control inspector come out and try to identify where it come from and to put in a request to have it removed by DPW. Now, keep in mind that when they come out, they're trying to find out where it came from. So all it takes is an individual to want to come and testify that they seen this person from this address put this stuff at the curb at such and such a time, they have enough evidence, we may issue a ticket to the person that put that debris out there. So the best thing to do, keep in mind, put it in front of your own house and it will be picked up on balk day. So now, there are some restrictions as far as that balk. So that balk needs to be not more than two cubic yards. And a lot of people say, well, what is two cubic yards? And if you're not, you know, deep into math and algebra and whatnot, you might say, well, what is two cubic yards? They say, you gonna put two cubic yards? I have no idea what that is. So I'm gonna tell you what it is. If you could imagine, just picture two stoles side by side, two stoles, right? If you could think of balk being no wider than this, maybe stacked this high, that's approximately two cubic yards. So anything, two cubic yards or less, they would pick up on your balk day. Now, you have to keep in mind that that balk cannot exceed 1,000 pounds. So I really don't know a good way to measure 1,000 pounds, but generally, if it's 1,000 pounds and you brought it out there at one time, I need to meet you. Please talk to me later. However, if you can think those two stoles, breaking it up into, the average person may carry what, 50 pounds? So had to do a little figuring there, but just try to keep it under, under 1,000 pounds. Okay, so also now the changes that have been made recently include a certain amount of construction debris. There was a time when the city didn't remove construction debris at all, but now they will remove construction debris. Again, it must fall under that two cubic yards, two cubic yards or less. And that includes household renovation debris now, which is wood, you know, lumber, cabinets, carpet, padding for the carpet, toilets, paneling, and drywall. They asked that if you putting out cabinets, that you remove the doors from the cabinet for safety reasons. And they asked that you bundle carpet, if you have carpet, just tie a little string around it to secure it and they will take it away. Okay, so also they asked that if you have things, objects and items with nails, that you pull the nails out, staples, just to make it safe for the guys that are picking it up. So you want to make sure that if you have bundles of tree brush, let's say a brush, you trim some bushes, those bundles need to be no more than four feet long and not more than 50 pounds. So you, you want to make sure that it's not more than 50 pounds and you want to tie, tie it up in bundles. So you can put as much out as you wish when it comes to, to the brush, long as it's not more than four feet long and tied in bundles, not more than 50 pounds each. And they also asked that you separate your balk. So if you have, say you have yard waste and you got your yard waste over here, put your regular balk stuff a little bit away from it so that when that guy comes, there may be two separate trucks picking up each pile. So you kind of want to separate it where they can just grab your stuff and keep going. They asked that you do that. That would be very, very helpful. And if you put refrigerators out there, they asked that you remove the doors from the refrigerators as well and drain the refrigerant from the refrigerator. The other thing that is a biggie in Detroit right now is containers at the curb. You ride down the street, everybody has a container sitting in front of their house. I get it. You gotta take this container around to the back. But you need to know that that container at the curb before 6 o'clock p.m. the day before collection and not removed from the, from the curb by 9:00 p.m. on the day of collection can get you a blight violation. And now the requirement now that is that, is that that container is just simply moved to the side of your house beyond your front door wall. So the front of house is here, that container can be anywhere to the rear of that front door wall. And which is an improvement because when the ordinance first came out, you used to have to have that container all the way in the back of the house where it could not be seen from the street. But our, our city council, they, they, they didn't like that for the residents and it was a good thing. They changed that ordinance, amended it, I guess it would call, right? And they made it where those containers could be actually on the side of the house and you do not have to take it all the way to the back of your house as you did when it first came out. Let's see here, what else do we want to cover? Let's talk about recycling cans. I know a lot of people, a lot of residents like to have two containers, but the ordinance only allows you to have one container unless you, unless your property is a multi-dwelling unit such as a two-family flat apartment building, four-family flat, or something like that. However, if for some reason you may need two containers, you can request a second container from Department of Public Works. And they will send someone out to verify if there's a need in the household for a second container. Now, I just want to say with the recycling containers, I have found personally that, now I'm recycling as well, if you get a recycling container, you'll find that you may not need that second container that you thought you needed. Because you can place a lot of the plastics and paper and the washing detergent bottles, all that stuff can go in your, your recycling container and it frees up your, your regular container for regular garbage, okay? So I pretty much covered what's on this flyer that I have in the bag. Please, I encourage everybody to get one, maybe take two, pass them out to your neighbors, friends, relatives. Yes, ma'am? I don't know, are you taking? I think so, yes.
All right.
Hi, thank you. I'm Yolanda with the Eastside Community Network. I have one, one, lots of clarification on one thing and I have another question. Clarification, you said the ordinance stated we had to have our trash cans out within 24 hours of trash pickup. Did you mean less than 24 hours of trash pickup?
No. Your can cannot be out before 6:00 p.m. the day before trash pickup.
Okay, thank you, that's different. Okay.
Did I say, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The second thing is if a person or senior gets a blight violation, when they call you, do you have a list of maybe nonprofits or low-cost providers who can assist them? Because oftentimes seniors don't have anyone to assist them, so giving them more time to get it rectified is not the concern or the issue. The issue is helping them find someone who can actually do the work free or very low cost.
No, we do not have. I understand that there's someone here today that may be able to speak to that. As, you know, the city, we, I don't have, I don't have any, you know, recommendations. It may be, you know, I get asked that a lot and a lot of times I want to give out certain people, you know, information that I know that do that type of work, but that may be a conflict of interest for me as a city employee, you know, I could be helping my friends or cousins, you know, and I can't do it. But there, I would suggest contacting your district manager who may have, and I know some of the district managers have access to people who can assist, but that would be on each individual basis. So you might want to contact your district manager to find out in those situations. Yes, ma'am?
My question is, I go down a block and there's 10 garbage cans still in the block after 9:00, four days later. How do you get that solved? I see it, but I don't live in that block. How do we get that straight?
Well, currently, if you call it into office, an inspector will come out. But as, you know, they're, they're, right now, we, we have spaces, I should say.
I got one more question.
So, so the containers are at the curb, I agree, a lot of containers. The ordinance states that you remove it. However, as you know, a lot of people do not, they leave it out there day after day. We get a lot of complaints about that and we go out, give those people a notice, move that container from the curb.
But they're not doing anything about it.
And they're not doing it. So what ends up happening is they end up, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I didn't get the answer I need.
I know, I thought you were still talking. So your question is, okay, so we can't, we don't have anybody to come out and remove those containers from the curb? We're depending on our residents to remove that container from the curb. If it's just at the curb, we will issue a violation notice for that container at the curb. I mean, but it's like if we don't know that it's there, we haven't got to complain about it, we don't just drive around looking for those containers because we're generally addressing other issues that has also come to our office. So it's, it's an ongoing battle. I agree 100%. Those containers at the curb has become one of our worst nightmares.
I was just trying to figure out how can we clean up our city?
I agree. I think, I agree with you. I want to clean up, I live in the city of Detroit, I never left, I've been here since I was a child. I own a house here. So I, some of the problems that we deal with in the city, I deal with them as well. So the best thing that I can say is, is to call that, that complaint in and we will send an inspector out to address that issue. But as you said, there are blocks and blocks and blocks of containers at the curb and there's only so many people that are forcing that. So, you know, unfortunately, there's more containers at the curb than there are inspectors. So we, we, we address everyone that comes to us, but we have to take them in order that they're received. So if I leave here today, I'm probably gonna find contained, I'd probably go down the block here and find 20 containers before I get to, what's down there? Yeah, Chalmers, Casu. And I, so I understand the need and we're, you know, and that's one of the reasons why we put all that stuff on our flyers and that's why I said, please take these, if you're in a block club, pass them out to your neighbors, give them to your friends, make it, I'm sorry. I agree, they don't read them, but maybe they will. And the other thing is, I would suggest, you know, making this a part of the conversation at the next Thanksgiving dinner. Hey, did you know that your container needs to be removed from the curb, you know, by 9:00 the day of collection? Anything that you can do to help because this is a city-wide issue with these containers. And I can tell you, having worked for the city in this division for 36 years, when the containers were first put out, that was not a problem. That was the least of our problems was the containers at the curb. But for some reason, the last 10 years, it has changed. And, and I don't know if it's just that the people who were around when the ordinance first came out or when the containers first came out, they just removed them and maybe, you know, it's different now. But we need to try to educate people to what the, what the ordinance is and it can help. And I know that's a daunting task and I see the look on your face, I get it. Believe you me, that is one of the things we deal with all the time.
But let me, let me also remind everyone that my office sent out a code pamphlet that also shared with everybody. We mailed it to all of the houses in District 4. So we lead first with informing our residents and secondly with calling out the inspectors because now you should know that this is a violation. But can you just speak to the amount of the fine? So a lot of times our residents think that because they continue to see the issue, that the property has not received a ticket.
Absolutely. So that fine is $100 for the first time. If you're, if you leave, get another violation for that container within a year, that fine goes up to $200. However, I will tell you that there are a lot of cases out there now that have default judgments because those individuals or the property owner never came to court. So with that being said, and I'm sure my colleague from DAH will speak to that, but, you know, so when you see these things, don't always think that the city is not, have not addressed this issue. We address these issues every single day. But, but it's, it's like it's a battle out there because there are so many people that just feel that because they own this house, I should be able to do whatever I want, not understanding that these ordinances were put into place so that we all could live collectively and enjoy some aesthetic beauty of our city. But unfortunately, there are some bad actors that feel, hey, these ordinances should not apply to me because I own this house. They don't care that you live next door and you still take a lot of pride in your house. You want to come outside and enjoy, you want to sit in your backyard, have a picnic, you know, whatever it is that you want to do. So we have to make sure that these ordinances are here too so that we all can live in a clean, safe environment. And that's the goal of environmental enforcement. We would rather you come into compliance on your own as opposed to writing all those tickets. Because those tickets take time, there's, you know, all the stuff that goes along with it, it's not good. So, but how do you get people to comply without possibly issuing them a ticket? And that's the question that begs to be answered. So from our standpoint as environmental enforcement, that's generally, generally where we end up if we don't get compliance from conversations or other means.
Thank you. My name is Brenda Watson. My question is, how would we be able to amend the time? If you're saying that it cannot, your balk cannot be put out in If you're saying that it cannot, your bulk cannot be put out until after 6:00 PM, it's okay in the summertime, but in the wintertime at 6:00 PM, it's already dark outside. And the other one is, if I'm cutting bushes down in my yard, I'm going to be cutting them down in the morning, I don't want to have to move them twice, which means I've got to move them one time and then wait till after 6:00 to move them back again. How can we amend the time? If it's 9:00 PM the day of pickup, why can't we amend it to 9:00 AM the day before? That gives my seniors time to get their pants out and they will also have time to make sure that they have time to get them back in.
I understand your question. So, when it comes to amending ordinances, that's a city council issue.
So, I need to write the amendment?
Right, because, you know, when, when they were amended before, and all of the ordinances have been approved by city council. So, my department, division, again, our job is to enforce the ordinances that are on the books. So, that would be like a police officer, they do not write, determine what the speed limit is, they don't determine, you know, other violations that, as far as moving violation. However, their, their job is to enforce it and ours is pretty much the same way. Like I say, we try to, to, to assist when we can because we would rather a person come into compliance without the tickets, but as I said, there are some bad actors out there that I think if you gave them two months to deal with a situation, they're not going to do it, so.
All right, Ms. Watson has probably my cell phone number, so.
Okay, good.
I'll look forward to having a conversation with her about amending the ordinance. There are several hands that I see raised.
Okay.
If we can keep it to one question and a short response, and then we also have some hands raised via Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
I seen this gentleman, who, oh, who has the mic? Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just got, I got two of your notices, right? I own a quarter of a block, a block that ain't got a lot of houses, can you?
Okay, I just want to say, I see the paper you have, I don't think that's from my team.
That's from your team.
Let me see it.
Yes, it is.
I've never seen this before. This must be from B.C. Okay, so this is a property maintenance. Yeah, this is not from us, but I see they checked off trash and debris, so.
All right, so in the back, do you handle that?
Huh?
If you don't handle that, then I'm passing.
No, I do not. There's a phone number on here, I see, so if you call this number that's on here, you will probably be able to get somebody to be able to assist you with this particular situation.
So, my name is Darnell Gardner, and, my name is Darnell Gardner, and my question slash point is, there needs to be more enforcement where I live. So, I don't see any enforcement being, being taken care of. I don't, I've never seen anybody on my block get a ticket for anything. Now, not that I have to see it happen, but what I'm saying is, I don't see it, okay? And I live west of this plant here, the Chrysler plant.
Okay.
That is an area that has been neglected in this district. I don't think we've ever even held a meeting in my area, Canfield Village is what we call it. So, I guess my point is, we have, and you've already said it, it's not your area, but we have vacant buildings that are wide open, we have trash, we have three feet of grass. I don't see any enforcement. And, and if there's a contact, if there's a direct contact for us to call and say, hey, we need some enforcement, that's the number I need.
Okay.
Because we're not getting any enforcement. We have the most blighted area in the district, everywhere. Take a drive, take a drive down Canfield from Benito to Cadillac. It is the most blighted area in the entire district.
So, have, do you know if those areas or those particular locations have been called into the city to respond to them?
Absolutely.
Do you have? So.
Absolutely.
So, you should be reporting the, no, let me tell you, if it's, if it's, if it's trash, overgrowth, stuff like that, you want to report those to 313-876-0426. That's our complaint line. And we will get an inspector out there, but I ask that when you make those reports, that you be patient, because if you can imagine, across this city, today, when I checked, we had 1,800 complaints today. So, so, so people, you know, there's a big push about See Click Fix, the See Click Fix Improved Detroit app is becoming very, very popular and we address everything on there. However, it's a process because if you take 28 people and you put them into 13, 1,800, that, that number is, you know, is not a good even number, so. So, but we do address every complaint that comes to us and.
No, no one on Zoom can hear you? The microphone is there?
Okay. I would think that there would be some method of us tracking these issues.
And there is, so that's what the Improved Detroit app is about. If you call that number and you put in an address or a complaint with an address, location, you will be given a tracking number, it's just that, you can call them back.
Or Click Fix?
Yes, yes, sir, See Click Fix. And so, you can call that, that, that number back with that tracking number and they can tell you where it is in the process. And now, here again, keep in mind that even though we come out and write a ticket, that does not automatically equal compliance, unfortunately. I wish, I wish that we could come out, write a ticket and everything is good, but the reality is that there are some people that will respond quickly and there are others that will wait until the day before the court case to, to, to come into compliance, then come in and say, hey, well, it's clean now. So, you know, then there's some out of state property owners that may even take longer than that, who end up in default judgment and not till they try to get a blight clearance, do they decide, I'm going to go over here and clean it up. So, I ask again that you be patient and, and most importantly, I ask that you report those locations so that we can have a record of them as well.
For certain, and very quickly, Attorney Pastula, I'm going to ask, presumably in your presentation, you will show the website where people can look up and see if a blight violation has been provided to a particular property. And Mr. Gardner, if you have any specific locations where you would like to suggest for us to host our meeting in your area, please let us know. We've had meetings at Wayne County Community College, we've had meetings in collaboration with Alexis Mann on Lima, but if there are other areas, please let us know, because I pride myself on making sure we get throughout the entire district so everyone feels like they have access to me and my office and that they do. I will also lastly add that, you know, your neighbor, Mr. Holloway, is always on my phone and telling me about different issues, but I know that you have been in communication with Gary previously, so if there's something that is still outstanding, please make sure you make us aware of that. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I, I, I just, I have it, I'd just like to say, I, I do read and when I got all those numbers, and it's not the first time.
Put your hand up, please, who's talking?
Over the years, I've called and made many, many reports. Nobody answers the phone. I called six numbers, I got one person, they don't even answer the phone when I try. I mean, it's funny now, and, and I don't know what is, I'm like, well, did they give me wrong numbers on every, they rang, but nobody answered the phone and I was just frustrated. I didn't keep up with it. I, I live on a block that, that is obviously neglected, they put the sign out, they used to clean the street, you know, and they say, clean the street, we gonna clean the street. And they did clean the street for a while, but cars stayed parked on the street, nobody came and gave them a ticket. They went around them, they never came and gave them a ticket. They didn't get those people, they get people, my block is a, they don't, no, they don't nothing over there.
You know, let me, let me respond to that because that actually came up during our budget hearings earlier this year on city council. It's very difficult to get residents to respond to the signs if they do not get a ticket for leaving their vehicle on the street. So, there are two schools of thought. Some people say, don't give them a ticket, but others say, okay, I want to make sure the street in front of my house is clean when they come through, but I cannot affect that if somebody comes and parks in front of my house.
Absolutely.
So, that, that certainly was topic of conversation and the request was for greater enforcement. I just recently, maybe within the last two weeks, had my block cleaned and saw vehicles parked on the street and the, the vehicle just goes right around it.
Right.
Okay.
So.
I have the mic.
To the, to the, to her question or concern that you said you called and nobody answered the phone, so if you, if you're calling about debris, trash at the curb? Okay, so, what I'm saying, if you're calling about that and you call 313-876-0426, I promise you, someone is going to answer that phone. Our phone rings all the time and, and to your point, I guess, not to throw anybody under the bus, but a lot of times people call our place about stuff that have nothing to do with what we do, but they tell my clerical staff all the time, I am just so happy that I have a person that I can talk to and we will do what we can to refer that issue that you're calling about to the correct location. Now, I don't know, and I'm not saying that the other departments are not doing it, I don't know where you were calling, I don't know if you had some bad numbers, but I promise you, if you call 313-876-0426, someone will answer the phone. Now, mind you, you have to call in the summertime between 7:00 and 3:30. Now, if you call after 3:30 while we're on our summer hours, it will go to recorder. So, but it, but in, in the wintertime, if you call between 8:00 and 4:30, someone will answer that phone.
We're, we're gonna take.
I promise you. And I'm gonna give you my card and if they, if you call there and you don't get answered, call me next.
We're, we're gonna take two more questions and then we're going to take the questions on Zoom, but I do just want to share that one of the reasons that the Department of Neighborhoods apparently was created is because it was a way to give residents the ability to reach out to one department for any concern, any issue that you had. It is not necessarily your responsibility to know which department handles what issue. And so, if you're reaching out to the Department of Neighborhoods and you're not getting an answer, I always encourage people to also reach out to our office because we work very closely with the Department of Neighborhoods and then we'll get the issue or concern to the direct department to address it. All right, Mr. Foster.
Oh, good evening. First thing I'd say, appreciate you coming out.
It's Mr. Foster, I'm sorry.
As well as.
You're right in front of me.
As well as living here, I think it's important that any of our directors or people in leadership should both live here and know the conditions that go on here, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just a few things. Community engagement is very important and I think the message here is being missed. We go back and forth. Poverty plays a role in every aspect of this city, in every aspect of community, in every aspect of engagement. It's important that every enforcement agency take that into account. You know, it was kind of condescending to talk about the things that went on. If we look at the last 10 years of our census, it highlights the change in attitudes and behaviors here within our city and how mental illness is also an aspect that plays a role. When we look out here in our community, we have seniors out here. Our seniors do not have young men or young people to assist them, so it's important that the enforcement agencies understand that as well, our community. And as far as policies go, one of the policies that I would suggest would be that you directly, go to, go to our legislators and you petition for grant funding so that while your inspectors are out there, they can identify those that are in need and just as well as they're giving citations, maybe they can give a referral to a voucher that can help accommodate and mediate a lot of things that we cannot, as citizens, cannot do. It's important that you continue to get as much feedback as possible and not just engage in just one perspective. The other thing, crime plays a role in, in these things. All right, thank you. But I just appreciate that and that, that's really the one, one thing I want to say and just leave in your mind, that our citizens are one citation away from homelessness and one citation away from poverty. We have to do better in enforcement.
Okay, thank you for that.
Two very, two very quick questions. You may have mentioned that individuals can call and request a second trash can, is there a fee for that? And my second question is, you've mentioned that you are now picking up building materials, so say if someone was disposing of old concrete, is that picked up as well?
Concrete is not picked up, that's one of the things that is not picked up. Unfortunately, that's not one of them. Concrete.
Not even with the paid pickup?
Oh, with the paid pickup, of course, I'm sorry, yes, paid pickup, they will pick that up. But you would have to contact DPW.
The cost?
Right, how do we determine costs for a paid pickup?
So, they, they base it on $25 a cubic yard, which is the, the, the most reasonable price that you can get for a disposal of trash. If you went to a private person, it's gonna definitely be more than, if it's less than that, please do not do it because there's a good chance that that same concrete is gonna end up around the corner on Chalmers. If somebody tell you they're gonna take away a lot of trash and they don't, and it's just extremely, extremely low, it's, it's probably gonna become some illegal dumping for someone else. I, I advise everyone to reach out to the city for that type of removal so that we can ensure that it goes to the right, gets disposed of properly and don't end up illegal dumping, someone else calling in saying, some truck dumped some stuff over here in the alley behind my house, you know, so, yes, ma'am, they will pick that up.
Is there a cost for the second trash can?
No, there is no cost for it. Once it is determined that you are in need of a second trash can, for whatever reason, they will send someone out there to investigate, not saying that everybody that called is gonna get a second trash can. So, they're gonna actually investigate it to see if there is a need and that would be done through DPW, not my department. However, you can call them at 876-0004 if you have any questions regarding a second container. Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, the first caller is Chiquita Whitfield.
Who's talking?
I didn't talk. You'll have to unmute yourself if you're muted, which you are.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry in a band because I'm in a store and they play music in the background. However, I was calling, well, asking about, what do you do when you make a complaint about someone's grass that's taller, as tall as a garage? It's like a forest in my backyard. And I called for the first time in 31 years I've been living in my house, never complained about anyone cutting or not cutting their grass, and I finally complained, find out this person has two prior tickets. However, the problem is, is the renters, the tickets are going to the renters, the owners are not doing anything about it and I do believe that house is owned by someone out of town and that grass has not been cut yet. Animals are living in the backyard of different species, rats running across my backyard from the high grass next door, so, I mean, I don't know what to do.
So, I will say that, that we do send tickets to the owner as well, if it's a renter and we have. If it's a renter and we have a, a address for the owner and the owner does not live in that house, we will send a ticket mail to that property owner. The, the one that you see that you think may be going to the renter is one, we require to post a ticket on the house. So that, a lot of times you'll see that one that they put on the house, that's just one of the tickets that's being sent out. Another one is being mailed to the owner of that property. And what was the second part of your question?
Well, it was like, when, when I did finally call, I was told that two other people called prior. So that mean, that's three complaints and the grass is getting higher. It's, it's like higher, real high. It's seriously high.
So let me ask you this.
It's over my gate.
Is this an occupied property or is it vacant?
It's occupied.
Okay.
By a family of like eight maybe, seven or eight.
Right. Okay, so that, that's a situation that we, that we come across quite often. But it's, it's not that enforcement has not taken place. Uh, we've, and, and I, I don't know the address you're talking about, but if you get that affirmation over to, to me, I can definitely take a look at it. But a lot of times, like I said, we'll write a ticket and, and, and people don't always comply in the time that we would like to see it happen. And the only thing that, that's available to us in most cases is to issue another ticket. However, we have been working with General Service Department whenever we, we can get some assistance from them to try to get some of these, these properties dealt with because it's a, it's an ongoing thing. And this is pretty much all over the city. So I, I, I definitely understand what you're going through. I have a, a house behind me that's the same way and, and, and I get it. So I find myself jumping over the fence every two weeks and cutting it myself simply because I know there's, you know, some things I may have to do. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, we have limited time. If you can keep your responses short because.
I certainly will.
It's extremely important that the Department of Appeals and Hearings has an opportunity to share information as well, but we have a few more hands that are raised via Zoom.
The next caller is Joanne Smith. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, yes, good evening. I have a question about, when you was talking about people getting, getting tickets for blight, when, when the gardeners people come, when they come to pick up the blight stuff, the buck stuff, they pick up half of it. They don't take it all. And then they wind up getting, then you wind up getting the ticket. So how do you solve that problem?
So that's, there. So that, that, that goes back to what I was saying about making sure that you, what you put out is, it falls into that category of being not more than two yards and being the right type of stuff that they would pick up. Otherwise, if, if, if it's not picked up, I encourage you to call DPW and possibly get a haul-in estimate to have them come out and pick it up, which is a paid pickup unfortunately. But if it's something that's not normally picked up on regular bulk pickup, you have to make other arrangements. So, uh, yeah.
No, no, listen, I have watched them on my block on Chalmers, when it was one box out there, they stopped, look at it and keep going.
So the question is what?
And I have to call them.
What was in the box? That's, that's.
I seen a couple more boxes in there with some detergent box. They do not pick up what they supposed to pick up. They'll pick up one right here and they'll miss a spot, then go someplace else.
Okay.
And I sit out there and watch them.
Okay, we can, we can follow up with Ms. Smith because that is an issue with the.
Disposal service.
The disposal service whose name is escaping me right now for some reason.
GFL?
Priority Waste.
Or?
Priority Waste.
Priority Waste, absolutely. Yeah, or, uh.
The next caller is Shambria Holloway. Please unmute.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, so basically my question is a little different, so it's not about the buck or anything. I am currently a renter of a home and I've received, I actually reached out to city councilwoman and, at her office and I spoke with a few people about my problem. So I had a couple plumbing issues. I got a contact with BSEED who also came out and did an inspection on the home. I'll say a week later, maybe two weeks, I received some violations, basically, that was not directed to me, it was directed to the owner of the home. At the moment, I'm going through a rental company, so I don't know exactly how to go about it with these people far as the violation, it's like for different non-compliant issues. So my question is, how do you go about when it's like different things far as like the lead inspections or non-compliance or rental and things like that?
Okay, I understand. So that is something that my, my team does not handle, but I'm going to give you a phone number that you can call when it comes to stuff like lead inspection, anything to do with the structure of the property, that would be held by BSEED's Property Maintenance Division. So are you ready for that phone number?
Yes.
You can also call 313-224-2733. So anything to do with the structure of the property, that's where you would call. And they have a lot of programs to assist you as, in terms of, uh, if you have a landlord that's not doing what they should be doing. And they have some, uh, so they have some good things going on down there as far as that now to help land tenants as well, okay?
The final caller is Michelle Jackson. Please unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I was here calling. I have my question. Can you hear me?
Yes. I think you're breaking up a little.
Yes. How is it that somebody can get a blight ticket and, and affect the rest of the community?
Ms. Jackson, you are breaking up. Your phone is breaking up. We can't make out your question.
I'll put it in chat.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll, we'll be sure, we'll be sure to come back to the question, but Mr. Jones, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
For everything. Thank you for.
My pleasure.
Thank you for all of the questions. And so with that, I'd like to ask for Attorney Pastula to come up to share information about the Department of Appeals and Hearings because after you receive a blight violation from Building Safety Engineering and the envi, the Environmental Department, your court case will go to the Department of Appeals and Hearings. And so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, council member. I'm gonna slow pool this table right over here because I don't have a clicker. So I'm always trying to identify what'll make our lives better and apparently this evening, a clicker would make my life better. So, all right, good. Can everybody see I'm not in the way? All right.
Can you turn a little to your right for the camera there?
Of course.
Excellent, thank you.
Of course, of course. All right, great. Perfect. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to be here and thank you again to council member Johnson for inviting me and giving me the opportunity to present to you today. It's always hard to follow up manager Jones. He has so much great information, but hopefully you'll find the information I'm gonna share with you, will build on and, and supplement, kind of, I know we are getting into what happens at court. So let's dive into that. First though, my name is Julianne Pastula. I began my career with the city in 2003. I spent over 10 years at city council's research and analysis division. I was at the law department for almost 10 years and I'm honored to serve now as Director of the Department of Appeals and Hearings. So let's get, let's get into it. The agenda that I'd like to cover today begins with background. Thank you for your help. Thank you, thank you. Begins with background, we'll talk about a blight ticket lifecycle and then we'll cover some how-tos like the council member indicated. Let's look at looking up tickets, paying tickets, how to adjourn a hearing and how to appeal a decision. So first things first, let's talk about background, who we are. We are the city's Independent Administrative Hearings Tribunal and we're committed to delivering timely, efficient, impartial and fair hearings. We operate under authority granted in state law as well as the Detroit City Code. So Blight Court, our Blight Administrative Hearings Bureau is the official name, but everybody calls it Blight Court. So we adjudicate all of the blight tickets that are written either by BSEED or DPW, excuse me, DPD, the Police Department, not DPW. DPW used to write blight tickets, but they no longer do, so I do apologize for that. So we provide due process. It gives people the opportunity to challenge a blight violation that was issued and we also provide the opportunity to appeal. We have the authority to determine compliance with the city code. We uphold fines and penalties for non-compliance and we can also levy the city's charge for remediation if there is any. We also take affirmative steps to collect unpaid judgments and we pursue collection actions, garnishments or liens where appropriate. I also wanted to note, and manager Jones hinted on this and I wanted to loop back to it, for blight clearances. Individuals or entities with unpaid blight judgments are unable to enter into city contracts, obtain permits or participate in either Wayne County or Land Bank Authority auctions. So to obtain a blight clearance, those forms and those instructions are on the DAH website. I will be giving a copy of my PowerPoint as a handout to the councilwoman's office as well as some of the resources that I identify later on in my presentation and that I talk about. So we'll, you'll have all that through the councilwoman's office after this evening. Let's move on to the blight ticket lifesaver because this is my favorite slide. So the first and most important thing is do not ignore tickets. If you want to avoid DAH, don't ignore your tickets. Manager Jones spoke a little bit about correction notices that BSEED, other divisions of BSEED enter. So correction notice, and the councilwoman also talked about a little bit timing, the timing between, yes sir, that's exactly what you have, and, and a little bit of timing between when a ticket is issued and when it's observed. Well, BSEED will give a correction notice and to put you on alert, hey, we, we noticed this violation. If you correct it, they don't issue a ticket. If it remains uncorrected, and that's one of the reasons for that time period between observation of a, a alleged violation and then issuance of a ticket. So don't ignore blight violation notices, the tickets or correction notices. Please contact the ticket issuing department regarding compliance. What do you need to do? What was observed? You have the option to admit responsibility in advance of your hearing at Blight Court. If you do that, there is a 10% reduction in the ticket fine, but if you do not correct the violation, so compliance is just a huge part of it, you can continue to receive tickets for that same violation until it's remediated. You also have the option to adjourn your hearing one time via motion. We'll go into that in a sub, at a later slide. We're just touching on it right now. After the ticket is issued, it will have your court information on it. So we'll have the Zoom information to log into Zoom. You can request if you need assistance from an interpreter. Those can be secured through CREEO, the Civil Rights Inclusion and Opportunity Department. I will have that contact information on the resource slide. So when you get to the hearing, both sides can present evidence. So the hearing officer will swear in all the parties. They go to the department first and ask the department to present its evidence, photographs, testimony, answer questions. And then when the department has concluded with its presentation, then the hearing officer turns to the respondent, the property owner that was issued the ticket. And they have the same opportunity to provide testimony, to provide pictures, to provide whatever evidence that they would like to support their, their position that they are not responsible for the blight ticket. At that hearing, the hearing officer will make a decision based on the information presented by both parties. So that brings us into the judgment circle of the lifecycle. So judgments are based on the outcome of the scheduled hearing. The options are responsible, determination of responsible, determination of not responsible. And if you do not attend your hearing, most likely a default judgment will be entered by the hearing officer and mailed to you. Do not ignore judgments. Similar to not ignoring tickets, do not ignore judgments. And as, also as Mr. Jones indicated, the further you get along in the process, the more difficult it becomes, the narrower your options are and quite frankly, the more expensive it becomes. So again, don't ignore the judgment. So if you're held responsible, that means you showed up to your hearing and you were held responsible. You have 28 days to appeal to Wayne County Third Circuit Court. That information, I have a slide on it that we'll go through and, and it's also on our website. If you were not able to attend the hearing, if you did not attend the hearing and you have a default judgment, you have 21 days to file a motion to set aside. So that brings us into our last circle, which is collections. So after a judgment is issued, if it is not paid within 14 days, we send out a unpaid judgment reminder. So you get a letter from the DAH saying, this remains unpaid. After 30 days unpaid, the cases are automatically transferred to our collection vendor. This happens electronically. This isn't, I don't have any staff members that sit at a desk and say duck, duck, goose, who goes, who doesn't go. That's not how this works. This is, this is court. So just like 36th District Court, when we're talking about traffic citations, you have an opportunity to come to, to, to speak with the, with the, in the courtroom. If you don't, everything that follows is, is all automatic. So after 30 days unpaid, those are transferred and then again, garnishments and liens can be filed. So let's, let's transition into how to look up tickets. So I know Mr. Gardner, I, I think he might have stepped out already, but Mr. Gardner was asking and mentioning properties that were severely blighted. You can look up blight tickets on any property in the city of Detroit. So you go to our website. So the, the citation is here or you can go to detroitmi.gov, navigate to departments and I invite you to go to the Department of Appeals and Hearings. You have two options to look up tickets. The first is if you know the ticket number. So this is more if you got a ticket, right? Or maybe one of your friends or neighbors got a ticket and you're assisting them. So that's the first red check mark. You fill in the ticket number and click here to find ticket. The second option is if you don't have a ticket number, you're curious about a property or your, your own property or business. So the drop-down carrot under that darker blue bar, you can look by violator's last name or business or by street number and street name. And then you just click find on either of those selections. That will cause blight ticket information to populate and provide fields in the, the information in the fields above. With the information in it, it's very, it's a very large screen. So, so I put a blank screen here, but just to give you an idea of all the information you'll see. So you'll see when the ticket was issued, you'll see the case, hearing date and time at the top, full name, mailing address, violation address. And what's important, particularly when we're looking towards compliance and, and questions, is the inspector name and then any inspector notes down at the bottom of the screen there. A lot of inspectors will type notes so that expound or illustrate further what that, what that violation is. Now, if you have a, if there are multiple tickets, a list will populate. All right, so the next slide, how to determine amount owed and pay online. So up at the top, you see a case number. And, and all of our records are public. I just redacted that just to be respectful of the individual who got this particular ticket rather than putting it on all my slides and all my presentations I do in the city. But you see there that it was all filled in. I did leave the mailing address of Inkster, Michigan. I did leave the mailing address of Inkster, Michigan unredacted because, again, that is an example Mr. Jones spoke about. All the blight violation notices are not only posted physically on the property, but they're also mailed to the property owner. And this is an example of one that is out city. And you see the judgment amount of $250 there. So you can say, you can click Pay Judgment. If it wasn't already a judgment, so your hearing, the hearing had not already happened, it would say Pay Ticket or Pay Motion. And it just depends where it is in the lifecycle and the action you want to take. So if you selected Pay Judgment, it'll put it in your payment basket. You can continue to add judgments. You can also add ticket payments in the same fashion. And again, if it's before your hearing, you get a 10% reduction. And you just click Check Out Payments when you're ready to pay. This is paying online. You're connected to our payment portal and you follow the prompts. If you enter in your email address, a receipt will be sent to you after your transaction is complete. So you just select your payment method there. Now, this is not the only way. I know we kind of ran through click here, click here, click here. That's not your only option to pay or settle any of your blight tickets. There's five options. So online, we already went through in that series of slides. You can pay by credit card or e-check. You can also pay at the Div-Deck kiosk located throughout the city. Just please make sure you select City of Detroit Blight Court Appeals and Hearings, not the ticket issuing department, because your payment will not be applied properly. And by the time it gets figured out, for lack of a better way to say it, your ticket will most likely, you'll be most likely being contacted by collections. And you'll say, but I paid this ticket. Here's my receipt. We can fix that. We're solution oriented, but it's a lot easier to select Blight Court at this stage and pay. So kiosks are located throughout the city. They're listed online, and they accept cash, e-check, or credit card. I would like to note, this is the only opportunity to pay cash to DAH anymore. We do not accept cash at our offices. You can pay over the telephone by calling our customer service line Monday through Friday between 8:30 and 4:00. We accept credit or debit card, Visa, MasterCard, or Discover only. And then the last two options are in person. We are located in Suite 1004 of the Coleman &amp; Young Municipal Center. So that's the 10th floor. We're open again Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And there are also kiosks located on the first floor of City Hall. Again, DH does not accept cash. So you can pay by check, money order, credit, or debit card if you visit our offices. And lastly, you can send in your payment by mail, a check or money order made payable to Treasurer, City of Detroit, with numbers in the memo section. Now, there is no fee to pay with a DAH agent if you call our customer service line. There is a fee to pay online or at a kiosk with a credit card. There is no fee to pay with a check or cash at a kiosk. So let's talk about how to adjourn a hearing. You receive a blight violation notice. You have a hearing date, and it coincides with a holiday that you're taking that's been planned. So we don't want you to miss your holiday, and we also don't want you to miss court. So the easiest thing to do is to adjourn your hearing. So there's a $20 adjournment fee associated with having it rescheduled. The motion must be made before your scheduled hearing date. You can't call the day of and try to get this done. If you're calling the day of, your best bet is to call into your actual scheduled hearing and hope that they have service on your cruise ship or wherever you are. After the hearing, you will only have the option to file an appeal. So you can pay the fee at a kiosk, in person, online, or over the telephone. I would not recommend sending motion requests for adjournments in the mail just for processing time. You want this to happen as quickly as possible and get your date, your rescheduled date secured before you come up against your originally scheduled date. So the documentation with a new hearing date will be mailed to you. So let's talk about appealing. I mentioned earlier that the earlier you engage with the city of Detroit in this process, the better. So for a correction notice, for a blight violation notice, go to your hearing. And again, you're starting to see this funnel, right, of options. So the appeal forms are on our website. If you attended your hearing and the hearing officer found that you were in fact responsible, you have 28 days to file an appeal with the Third Circuit Court. The cost for appealing with the DAH for this is $25 per ticket, and you have to pay the bond in the amount of your judgment. So this is where, this is where the cost really, really becomes significant. So you also have to request a transcript. And again, you can pay online, in person, by mail, or over the telephone. You can file via email, by mail, or in person with our offices. If you receive a default judgment for not attending a hearing, you have 21 days to file this motion with DAH. You have to provide good cause for why you didn't attend and the reason you believe you're not responsible for the ticket. So it's almost like you're having to state what you would have said at your hearing if that was attended. So the motion cost is $20 per ticket. And again, you have to pay the bond in the amount of the judgment. So you can pay online, in person, by mail, and at a kiosk. I did want to note, you can file the motion email, by mail, or in person. If the motion is granted and you have a new hearing date set and you're held not responsible, your bond amount will be refunded to you, but that takes about 12 weeks. So again, earlier the better. The earlier you engage with the city, the better. Both manners of appeal require respondents to file a bond. And I just wanted to acknowledge that that, again, can be a significant cost burden. Let's talk about a resource list. If you have questions about your ticket or to discuss compliance, contact the ticket issuing department. For BSEED property maintenance, I know a few callers and attendees had questions about noxious weeds and other issues that are not covered by environmental section where Manager Jones works. So there's the email and the phone for both of those sections. If your ticket was issued by DPD, please reach out to your local precinct to contact that officer. If you have questions about your hearing, a judgment, to pay a ticket, please contact DAH at our customer service number, which is 224-0098. I provided you our customer service email as well for your convenience. If you need to request a translator in advance of a hearing, that's again through our CREEO department, and the email to do that is also listed. Again, I'll give the councilwoman a copy of the PowerPoint presentation so that way everyone has access to this information, because I realize I'm moving a little bit fast. I want to get to, your questions are so important. Questions about the city's remediation costs for GSD. And then if you receive a letter from our collections vendor, Linebarger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP, their number is also provided. So if your ticket is in collection, you need to call Collections. Again, I invite everybody to connect with us online at detroitmi.gov/DAH by our customer service telephone number, 224-0098, at any of the Div-Deck kiosks, or again, on the 10th floor of the city county, the, excuse me, Coleman &amp; Young Municipal Building. If you have questions about a violation or compliance requirements, please reach out to the ticket issuing department. If you have a question about your hearing date, Zoom and log information, or filing motions, please reach out to DAH. And lastly, I wanted to thank the councilwoman again. I really appreciated the opportunity to be here tonight and spend the evening with you. And I forgot, I did say I would talk about resources. So Manager Jones mentioned contacting the district manager. The councilwoman mentioned the See, Click, Fix, Improve Detroit, either the app or filing it online using the city's website. But I wanted to also share, and I'll provide this information as well, to the councilwoman for distribution. We have the Detroit Housing Network link to their website, the Water Department Lifeline Plan, and they now have a new payment plan that they rolled out just within the last two weeks, the Property Tax Exemption Hope information. We also have the Detroit Housing Resource Helpline. That number is 866-313-2520. And I'll provide the councilwoman's office also with a list of housing resources that is separated by whether you're a renter, an owner, or renter-owner, or looking to buy a house. There is also resources listed on that sheet for that. The DH and the city code, the fines are strict compliance. So either the violation existed or the violation did not exist at the time. That's what, and the city is alleging by providing blight violation notices that the violation did exist at the time. So the DAH is your opportunity to attend a hearing and explain why you believe that the violation did not exist and have that conversation in front of a hearing officer. So again, if the violation existed, the code as structured is strict compliance. The one, the one thing that the state law allows hearing officers to do for owner-occupied residences, if it is a first offense and the ticket issuing department verifies compliance, the fine can be waived. You're still responsible for the $30 judgment, administrative judgment that that's levied by the state, but the actual fine will be waived in that situation. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned those resources. And again, we'll provide that information to the councilwoman's office as well. I will talk all night about this kind of stuff because I'm so passionate about it, but, and I love my job so much, but we're going to have an opportunity for additional questions, I believe. So I will again just say thank you so much for letting me be here with you this evening.
All right. Hello, thank you too. All right, my situation was that they, you know, the trees in the alley, that's when they hit me with tall weeds on one half. The neighbor on the next street had one side, I had one side. But it's a big tree that's on the city side that fell. And when they came, they said it was private contractors and that they was, that was my responsibility to clean it up. I can't even move, I don't have no machinery to move these logs. These logs is big. It been there, some of them are riding out, but I don't want to get ticketed. They already gave me a notice for it. I cleaned up, I'm like 95% of everything they told me on this card to do. I didn't have a lot, but like the gentleman said, where is Mr. Foster? He left. Mr. Foster was explaining, I have neighbors, because there's not that many people on the block, right, on St. Clair between Shoemaker and 94. And they don't have money to do that. So I've been trying to help out. One lady need a sofix, you know, I've been donating my time and my resources. I have some extra wood and storage, and I helped her out with her because she got hit too. But what about those people that can't afford to get those repairs in a timely fashion? But I just want them to come out there and clean up what they put in the alley. I cannot go no further. I own several parcels, and I own three houses on that block, all in the line. So I don't want to be getting, I don't want this to turn, I don't want, I just want, I don't want y'all coming to me no more after this.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? After I do, I got one more thing to do with y'all. I don't want y'all coming back. But I don't want you to hit me because of those trees that you guys cut down and left it in the back. I mean, it's nice, but you want to stay there, just don't hit me with it.
Okay, so again, the Blight Court, we just hear the tickets. So, but I want to, I want to, I do want to respond to what you're saying because it's a very serious issue, and you've got your correction notices here. You're already doing the right thing. Make sure you reach out to the ticket issuing department because you can work with them in advance of your hearing and speak with them about some of the issues that you're raising. And again, as far as community resources, touching on what you and Mr. Foster and others have either raised or are thinking about. The community resources that I identified, anytime that my department becomes aware of community resources, we distribute them to our entire staff. So our customer service representatives will have them. But the best place to get customer, excuse me, community resource referrals is the Department of Neighborhoods, Bridging Neighborhoods, these departments that are designed to transmit, collect, and create, going again towards getting grant funding, to knowing about grant funding. Because there are nonprofit organizations and social service organizations that will have resources that the ticket issuing department wouldn't know about, the court wouldn't know about, and the information can change so rapidly. I know the Roof Repair Program ran out of grant funding very quickly because of need in the community. So again, I would, I would really encourage people to contact the Department of Neighborhoods, the Housing and Re-divitalization Departments, and those types of departments for those community resources. Thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
When you had your chart up there, I got a warning. I own a house with a lot next to it, with a gate around it. I got a warning. I called the number on the ticket, on the warning, no one answered. I went to the office, spoke with a person, showed them the pictures. They told me what to do. A month later, they came back out. Now I have tickets for something that they told me what to do. I stopped the young lady when she put the ticket on my gate. And she told me, the person in the office gave me the wrong information. So my thing is now I have to go to court on something that I tried to fix before. You know, and the problem is, I bought my house, I bought the lot next to it. I put a gate around it, but I use both driveways. I have a ticket for a car I drive every day because I moved my car out of one driveway to let my daughter go to work, and I put it in the second driveway, and they ticketed.
So that's an unfortunate situation that you described that I know, I can tell just from knowing you for 10 seconds, you're going to go to your hearing and you're going to talk about all this kind of stuff in front of the hearing officer.
But the young lady told me, if I go to the hearing, I still have to pay the $30. She said if I lose the hearing, I have to pay the $200 ticket for a car I drive every day that's on my house every day. I don't feel that that should have been ended when my car is registered, my car have insurance on it, and it's on my property.
You got an inoperable vehicle ticket. Definitely, yeah, go to your hearing. So there's two, Manager Jones touched on this briefly. BSEED used to handle all the inoperable vehicle tickets and that. Now, DPD is involved, municipal parking, there's multiple involved. So an inoperable vehicle is one that doesn't have tags, doesn't have an engine, isn't tarped, is in the public, is in the public roadway. You can also get tickets for parking on grass and residential areas R1 and R2. So there's also quite a bit of those coming out. But again, ma'am, definitely, definitely attend your hearing, especially if you've already talked to the person who issued the ticket. You definitely do not want to miss your hearing.
So there's nothing I can do before the hearing? So there's nobody I can talk to before the hearing?
No, not if you've already contacted the individual that wrote the ticket. And also because everyone at all our jobs, there's the work versus resource issue. If you do speak to the city and there is a resolution, use that ticket lookup to check on your ticket. So if you have a conversation and there's compliance and there's going to be a dismissal, just go ahead. You can look up on our website also to be able to see what the current status is. But I, again, I'm in the Blight Court, right? I'm at DH, so I'm always going to say, go to your hearing. Go to your hearing, go to your hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Foster.
Yes, ma'am. Just one thing, just personally, or a couple of things. I'm glad you was here. I was able to look up the app on there. I typed in my name, and seven citations come up from DHA. Now, the property listed, I had a property I used to own in Roseville Park. It no longer exists. It haven't been there for seven years or so. However, they're still legal from Sampson and Blair and everything, as recently as two years ago. And so as a citizen here, why would I be put in a position to defend something that don't exist and that's over seven years? Is the city doing anything at a very minimum, riding around and looking? Because if anybody just ride to this Because if anybody just ride to this address in which they're trying to hold me accountable for, it's nothing there. And so these are the type of issues in the already impoverished community that brings more issues and grievances. We ask that these things go two ways here when it comes down to enforcement and community and accountability, not just the citizens be held accountable, but the city need to be held accountable. In my community, and for example, I have three buildings. They are the biggest eyesores. They're two or three stories high, and the biggest eyesores, and there's zero accountability. The city is not going to court to take care of it. The community can speak out about it. We don't have the means to write citations. We don't have the means to hold the city accountable. But yet, on the other hand, while we are impoverished, and majority of our citations are only in neighborhoods, I would like to get a breakdown into how many of these citations are going on in the communities versus what's going on in your neighborhoods. And I think that would draw a bigger picture in how we should go about addressing enforcement and working together as a community.
Yeah.
That was the first thing.
Okay. So Mr. Foster, I'm glad you raised that. So Councilwoman Johnson actually asked some really great questions during our last budget cycle, and I'm sure she's going to ask even more excellent questions this budget cycle. So there's been ticket breakdown numbers in the memos, which are online, they're publicly available. We just had a renewal of our collection vendor contract before city council recently. Again, my department was asked another series of excellent questions that provides a very detailed breakdown for those property owners, commercial versus residential, in the city, outside of the city, in the state, outside of the state, and outside of the country. So that information, I think you might find very, very, very interesting, Mr. Foster. And again, touching on the other areas you highlighted, those are definitely citywide issues that I wish we could solve at Blight Court, but unfortunately I cannot.
I have one virtual caller, Jocelyn Harris. Please unmute.
Yes. Good evening. It's so, it's so interesting to hear your presentation. It's so thorough and so worked out, a lot of the details. The challenge that I want to present, and I'm sure our councilwoman has already asked a lot of these questions, but I'm always asking the question, if the citizens are being held responsible for blight, and these fees are being collected, it would make sense to me that the fees collected would go back into an area that would help to prevent the problems from reoccurring. There's always a cost for everything. So my question is, where does this money collected go?
Okay. That, I can take part of your excellent question, Ms. Harris. So the DH fees and fines that are collected go towards supporting our budget, and then anything over our budget, then, and again, our budget amount is set by council. I don't just get to spend however much I want at all. So anything in excess and above our budget, everything goes into the general fund. So the second part of your question, as far as the policy portion of it, that, of course, is something that the elected officials go through and work through in their lengthy budget hearing and budget workshops that they do, again, which is all public and it's done in open meetings. So, and I shouldn't have made it seem like my tickets go to my budget. Any fines and fees collected by DH go to the general fund. My department is funded through the general fund, is a much more accurate and clear way to say it. So thank you for letting me correct it.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Attorney Pastula. I saw another hand go up, but if you can have a direct conversation with her, that would be wonderful. We are past our 7 o'clock hour, and I like to be timely, but I want to make sure I share a few things with you all, that we have our bike ride coming up in Morningside on Thursday, Thursday at 6:00 p.m. at the Three Mile Munich Park. And again, I want to make sure District 4 residents are aware of the private sewer repair program that is specific for the Cornerstone Village Community, Morningside, Chandler Park, Fox Creek, River Bend, and West End in District 4. So if you've had a backup in your basement and you would like to apply for the private sewer repair program, please be sure to get one of our flyers or reach out to the office, 313-224-4841, so we can get that information to you. They have started to do installations. I want to make sure that all of the District 4 residents who can, who qualify have applied and that you all are at the head of the line. So District 4 had the most applicants that had been received. However, please, 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 apply, share with your neighbors to apply because there's still, I believe, over 1,000 slots that need to be filled. So make sure you're sharing that information. Not lastly, because someone did text me. One of the other things I want to make sure everyone is aware of is the Detroit Home Accessibility Program. It is a program for seniors and disabled individuals throughout the city of Detroit. If you have a need for your home to be made accessible for you to live in place, to, I'm sorry, to age in place in your home, there are some grant dollars, is actually some of the American Rescue Plan Act funding that is being utilized, I believe $6.6 million to implement that program. So please, 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 seniors and disabled individuals throughout the city of Detroit, apply for that information, I'm sorry, for that program, because we want to make sure we get those dollars utilized. If you know anyone, share the information, don't hold on to it. And lastly, on September 16th, at 6:00 p.m., from 6:00 until 7:30, the ombudsman is hosting, and my phone just died. Linda, I think I remembered all of it. The ombudsman is hosting a fair for districts 3, 4, and 5. I'm trying to remember what exactly it was for. Lord Jesus, somebody help me. So September 16th, we'll make sure, Linda, that we send it out in our e-blast because it is for districts 3, 4, and 5. The ombudsman's office, we know, does an exceptional job with getting information out and providing support to our residents. So please stay tuned for that information. I have one question. The question is about the lead water line replacement program. It is, I know that they're in Morningside in District 4. I'm not sure of any other District 4 neighborhoods that the Water Department is currently working in. So they're working throughout the entire city? They do areas at a time?
Also, do you have to call the contractor?
You do not. So they identify, so they have a way to look at the line to determine whether or not the line has lead? And if it does, then they're looking in the areas where there's a large concentration of lead lines, and they're starting, they prioritize in that manner. Any other questions for me? Any questions on Zoom for me?
Have Rhonda Irvin, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Ms. Irvin.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Wonderful meeting. Through all that, I'm trying to find out, one question, you said the ombudsman meeting that'll take place, the fair that'll take place, we'll get some more information on that. What's the location? Where will it be?
Oh, thank you. Thank you to Teresa Dubose for sharing the information with me. It is at Heilmann Rec Center, and it is a meeting specifically about priority waste. That's what it is. I couldn't remember it, but thank you for sharing that. Again, the ombudsman's office, in collaboration with priority waste, will be addressing all issues, challenges, and concerns our residents have in districts 3, 4, and 5 about waste collection. Again, that's on September 16th, from 6:00 until 7:30 p.m., Heilmann Rec Center, 19601 Crusade. All right. I know you all are itching to see the initial night of the Democratic National Convention. So wait a minute, there's still folks raising their hand on Zoom. Yes.
The last hand raised is Calvin McGee.
Oh, Mr. McGee, hello.
How you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry I missed the meeting because I forgot it was today. However, my complaint now is, I got a lot of people speeding on Chalmers, right, right on the south side of 94. And they doing, right here at my corner, they either doing donuts or they speeding. Every night, there's a guy in a charger. I would like to know, can we get a stoplight here? And also, there's a lot of blight going on with people throwing trash and whatnot. I call the 5th precinct all the time, and they say, well, call 911. I said, well, you all in the area? You know? So those two things right there is a pet peeve for me right now, because I don't even like to cut my grass on the side because I got a half a bag of trash to pick up. I got a toilet in front of my house right now that somebody threw out. But seriously, on both matter, we need a stoplight here.
All right. Thank you.
Right here at Chalmers.
I know exactly where you are. I'll follow up with you, Chalmers and the Service Drive. I'll connect with you so we can reach out to the Department of Public Works to address that, because I have had questions that went to the department relative to addressing speed on major roads or secondary roads. And so we can, we can follow up with the director to address that, because there was another issue that recently came up on, I believe, Dickerson. And as a matter of fact, someone text me yesterday about folks doing donuts right at the Chandler Park-Chalmers area. And so you may be referring to the same thing. So I had indicated that I was going to reach out to, also to, the Wayne County sheriffs because not long ago, I was driving past Chandler Park, on Chandler Park Drive, and saw that there were probably four or five sheriff's vehicles that had pulled people over. It was surprising to me, but I'm going to see what we can do collectively with the Detroit Police Department to stop the donuts and that activity from happening. So thank you for that. And then as it relates to trash, it's something that we all have to address instead of throwing trash out the window. Like, the city has billboards that say, do this and not this, don't throw it out your car window. Instead, put it in a trash receptacle so that you don't have to have volunteers from the community who then have to turn around and pick up your trash. But it's something that we all have to work on and encourage our neighbors, our family members not to throw trash out because somebody has to pick it up, or it ends up in our sewer system and clogs up our drains. So keep that in mind. All right. Thank you all so much. I'll still be here if anyone has any additional questions or concerns, but enjoy the convention. Thank you.